So we're moving on to line seven, please take the main. So a bit before Kelly gets to us and we don't have part of the round this time.
Inspector instead.
Spectre instead. So this is the reports. Reports on page fifty-one to sixty-four. We usually have part of the round in due, a bit in due, and then we'll follow up any comments and then we'll take any points from.
You're ahead of schedule, so I'm just looking.
Okay, so really, I'm Matt Johnson, sorry, Matt Johnson, as you don't know me, I'm the area inspector. I'm actually Jason's boss. Jason's on leave today, couldn't be with us unfortunately, I was on leave, so I just wish we'd come back from Derbyshire. As bad as I could have been, but anyway, we're here. I will apologise again, I haven't got the in-depth knowledge that Jason, Jason's been on the area for years, doesn't know where. It's hard to follow, I'm not even going to, not even going to town. That said, the area report, which was looking at the three priorities set last winter in December. First of the priorities, in my opinion, probably the most important was the work against drug dealers in the north area. This is largely an ongoing piece of work that all my area teams have been doing. Cambridge, the city, for the last number of years has had increasing numbers of dealers coming from the London area, coming into the Cambridge area to try and apply their ways. Typically, they've been trying to set up some bases in the north, east and the south areas. For the north, it's been one of the key areas for them, there's quite a decent market for them, so there's an attraction for them to be here. Jason and the team have worked an awful lot on the private side, conducted a number of warrants, they know who the guys are, they identify guys that appear out of place, regularly using sort of powers where appropriate, where proportionate, conducting searches and have had a number of good arrests, and also had a lot of proactive work as well. Over the last few months, we've been moving to a different style of police, essentially, we've moved into addressing this from a safeguarding point of view. What we've been doing is we've identified a lot of the people who are regular drug users, who have been having the drug dealers from London turning up with their addresses, initially give them free bags of goodies to keep them going for a couple of days, and then directly just moving into their house. Now, the problem for that, from a police point of view, is that we then get to people who are essentially vulnerable drug users, who are being evicted from their own houses, if you like, because the drug dealers moving in. It's harder for us to detect, it's harder for us to enforce. If you're a drug dealer, obviously, one of your key assets is all your drugs. If you're having to trade out about on the street, having to carry those with you, you stand at a far higher risk of being caught. If you're able to base yourself in a house and just go out with small numbers of deals, you know, if you are caught with some drugs on you, then likelihood is that, you know, we're going to be struggling to prove any rule of possession, a personal possession. So it's in our interest that the actual drug dealers aren't getting embedded. Also, once they get embedded, that's when you get violence and things like that, which is because they're protecting their own territory along. So consequently, what we've been doing is we've identified vulnerable users who are likely to be having people moving into addresses with visits and turn them, we recognise that they're vulnerable, we recognise that they're likely to be targeted by the London dealers that are coming here. Essentially, what we're then doing is conducting regular visits, we're giving them a letter, telling them exactly what we're doing, we think that they're vulnerable, we're there actually to support them, trying to direct them to drug services and why. But we've been conducting regular visits, what that's given them an opportunity is as when the dealers from London have been turned up, they can turn around and say, the police have given them a letter, they're coming around nearly every day, you can't leave here, you're going to get caught. That has, you know, the south, the east and the area, that's had a really positive effect in stopping, so that anyone getting a real good foothold in Cambridge. So at the moment, that's the work that the team have been doing. A lot of the work, whilst we haven't done the volume of warrants and things that we've done in the past, we've been doing these visits, and we're making Cambridge largely a hostile place for the dealers to be. One of those is quite difficult on the, to show the volume by way of results, because again, we're not doing the warrants, because we're actually looking from a safeguarding point of view, looking to protect. That said, those that don't want to engage, that then gives us even more motivation to actually go and carry out some enforcement work with them. So it's making the court, we need to be forced against smaller, it's making it easier for us to target key addresses as well. That's largely the work that we've been doing over the last quarter there. Tried to engage with Cambridge News as well, also Cambridge News, they've run a couple of stories just getting promoted to some of the work that we've been doing. Again, a lot of cases that were done perhaps a year ago, coming up this time, in the main early guilty pleas, long custody of sentences. Cambridge remains a fairly hostile area for people that want to come to be dealing with their past address. That's that one. The second objective was the support of the twenty mile an hour limit around the Cambridge North. That's largely been led by PC Doug Mackenzie, who is former traffic officer, who has got a great interest in actually all things road related. So we've conducted a large number of checks, the majority of that's been in the chest scenario. But with both the PCs and the PCSs having conducted regular weekly checks. It's a big area, so perhaps people will say, oh, I've seen them all a couple of times in this road, but a couple of times in this road, a couple of times in that road, a couple of times next. Heads up to quite a big picture picture. They are out there, they are getting done. Certainly just having driven here now, having, you know, sort of driven through, I'm sitting at twenty, a car ahead of me is disappearing. There's going to be times when people aren't complying, but the message is starting to get through. Jason's noted here that the level of complaints have actually gone down, however, we seem to be having complaints about HGVs, rate and weight restrictions, overnight restrictions, seven up time, the Victoria Road, and also cycling, culture. With regard to the third priority, which was cycle crime and social cycling, again, done a number of engagements or opportunities, where we've gone out promoting the bike register, national bike register, and getting people registering their equipment on Immobilise. Again, focused in Chesterton, particularly along the river, because that seems to be apparently where we've been finding people using the bikes to get, using bikes to get from the north area across the river. So around the established common, that's where we've been conducting some bike stops and things like that, checking frames, checking them against Immobilise, things like that. Current situation, cycle crime down, Jason did make mention of the fact that we have actually seen a couple of cycle things move from the north to the east, which again enhances the flow between, but also my account for the reduction of the figures that we've seen. I've talked through the productive work and, sorry, the emerging issues. Burglary dwelling has seen an increase. Sorry, burglary dwellings seen an increase with fourteen more offences over the area. Reduction in Abbey, that's King's Hedges and Westchester seeing an increasing number of eleven cons. The robbery figures, robbery's seen six more offences. Theft of vehicle, only three vehicles, been reported stolen, the period theft from vehicle, there's been an increase, that's across the city. Seen an increase in theft from vehicles. Again, that's largely people leaving things in the car, it's not things like radios and stereos, because people don't steal those anymore, they're fixed in. This is where people are leaving the handbags on the seats and just popping in, just left the car. Largely opportunists where people left the bikes was available, bikes was available on display. And again, total crime been a reduction, slight, slight reduction on the same period for the previous twelve month period. And again, ASP incidents, the number of ASP incidents that have been called in have shown a reduction as well. ASP has seen, we've seen an increase in probably the number of calls of ASP in Scotland Road area around Crunkies Corner, around there. So that's an emerging issue for us, not having been here this time last year, I don't know if this is more the seasonal thing, but the thing we're picking up is the ASP related around the Scotland Road area there, so Crunkies Corner, particularly in the evening, vehicles parking up, and so a lot of mess in the left around there. Any questions?
No, let's find that much, yeah, there's also a point, a member for the incident data, which is on page fifty-nine, and the environmental service data, which we've got from page sixty to sixty-three of the report. So any comment on what Matt said and the other section of the report? I've already got, I've got the by the council, I've got the vice, and I have the man, Austin, and I'm all by the council. And we'll kick off with councillor, who are you?
Thanks, yeah, I'm going to make a pitch for Victoria Road as a priority, forcing against the preaching the HGV thing. I know you've mentioned that Sergeant Rag has had the odd complaint about this, he hates it enough, like, I get them not only properly weekly, and at one stage daily, but near Victoria Road, so I can testify to exactly how bad it's been. I think a few years back, when it was occasional, it wasn't that big a deal, I don't think, it was, you know, annoying, but not that big a deal. Over the last, especially over the last six months or so, it's got to the stage where almost every single night now, any time there's any work on the A fourteen, it's particularly bad. We're not talking about delivery lorries, we're talking about the A fourteen, massive, massive lorries, coming with the A fourteen and using Victoria Road as a shortcut. There's another way of getting past, of getting through. It wakes up residents, they can't sleep, you can't when your road turns to a motorway at night. It shakes the houses, so even using earplugs doesn't work because the houses shake, so the beds shake, so you're getting woken up. To give you an idea, we have actually tried as much else as we possibly can, with having to make the police issue. So we've spoken to the county about getting new signage and fixing the signage, we spoke to training standards at the county council, who suggested on several occasions that I go out in my pajamas and take pictures of the lorries after the bust. Not quite sure what they thought that was going to do.
Scare the neighbours.
I don't think it'll scare the lorries though, because they're the past, so. So we've really kind of, we've run out of other options, we really do need police enforcement, we need a mobile camera available for all possible, we just, we need help. There's nobody else really that's able to do it. And so I'm asking pretty please, you know, please could you help us enforce this night time, this overnight plan, and have your lorries? Because as I say, it's not a trivial issue for residents who live there, they can't sleep, and it's been going on for months and months and months and months.
No, I mean, there's something here, subject to the committee, that's either something to take priority off, not on the way to action anyway, so.
Yeah, we might come to that perhaps when we get to the investigation in terms of perhaps adding that as a third priority. Okay, councillor, I've also got, which is question table of course, says Laura here. I'll try and keep everything in order that people write their hand, councillor Sarris.
Thanks, I'll just give you some background, I mentioned this earlier, the crime is a problem is very much ongoing one. It's not just people parking up, it's also littering, it's implications with drug dealing, it's clearly there's an association with the meeting of local residences, it's creating a general, into the danger atmosphere that affects citizens. I think the closest we had to salvation there was when for a short period, there was an issue actually raised, I remember the public, as a councillor, when for a short period the police did have mobile CCTV camera parked up, and that did work in terms of, suddenly off those vans disappeared. And residents were very grateful, so if we could look into doing that, could you please, that would be much appreciated. And then my question is to do with the drugs dealing aspect. Again, Maitland Avenue, over a number of years, we've had problems there, drugs related, not just limited to drugs, but then the off spin problems to do with prostitution, to do with aggressive begging on the doorstep. So I get anxious whenever I see any issue related to Maitland Avenue, I'm in the head again. So where the report refers to decent quantities, is that, is it, just to clarify, my sense was that you say that you were catching as many London dealers who seemed to be selling amounts of drugs for personal usage of vulnerable individuals? I mean, are these of decent quantities, is this, is this more akin to a doorstep delivery by the milman? Or is this a sizable chunk of his flint one would say, what's the sort of scheme of it?
The issue that you have with the drug dealers, obviously, they come up from London, they want to make the trip, they want to bring enough to keep them going for a few days, to save them having to go. We've been getting good intelligence from the community, the local team, the local officers that you've got, recognise those that are local and recognise those that aren't, they're able to build up a picture on that. What they've had success with, with some of the warrants, is actually, you know, good intelligence that's come forward, and been able to piece through from a lot of different places, and actually, you know, some well timed warrants that have then been able to pick some people off as they've almost come up from London with a few days' worth of them, that they would then be looking to deal out to the community. That's why I'm keen that we carry on the safeguarding work in keeping them out of the dresses, because whilst they're, whilst they're on the streets, if they're only having to go to a house, just to search anything in the house, of course, you've got a hundred and one places you can hide it, you can well in the house, particularly if you're there for any length of time. Whilst you've got all your gear in the house, you can then go out on the street, which is literally one or two deals. And if you're actually stopped by me or one of my colleagues, literally, say, most persons who typically don't look like drug users themselves, but it's hard to disprove. If we can keep them out on the streets, they have to have days' worth of gear on them, it makes it more, they're more of target. Certainly for us, they're more of a target for any other sort of drug dealers or migrants to turn them over. There's less of an incentive for them to come. But certainly with some of the results we've had, where decent quantities, that refers from a couple of days' worth of deals to a number of people.
Okay, thank you very much for that response. Just a reminder, I've got councillor Price, there, and I've got councillor Taylor, and we've got councillor Austin, man, and councillor Pitt, councillor Scott, councillor Terry, councillor Bird, so far.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jed. Thanks for this, Matt. I usually try and look through these reports and look for where the good, where improvements are for a start. So as a King's Hedges ward councillor, I'm pleased to see that violent crime in King's Hedges has come down. However, I do have concern that it would appear now more of our crime is sort of theft related. It says here, we've had an increase in non-dwelling burglaries, where King's Hedges has accounted for all the increase, which is worrying. Like I said, we've got ten fewer offences in terms of violent crime. The numbers, we've got too many, or, you know, one is too many, but to see it come down, like I said, is encouraging. The dwelling burglaries have also increased, and that, you know, that's something that nobody from the outside sees. It's something that just affects people in their homes and makes them uncomfortable, you know, they've been violated there. So I think it's a more serious crime than sometimes we think it is from looking in on the outside. And the other increase that we appear to have had, which saw us having more theft from vehicles, which you mentioned. I know before we've been told when burglary is raised, that it's quite, we quite forget the spike when an individual has been released from prison. And then after a little while back at work, that individual is caught again and suffers the inevitable consequences of his occupation. So I would like, if we're going to add to priorities, to see burglary, non-dwelling or dwelling burglaries, that, you know, the way they affect people, is it already in there? It's the city, right? Well, okay, well, let's, let's see where we go with it. I mean, I'm happy if it's a city crime priority, but I would like it also, you know, to be cracked down on in North Area and in King's Hedges in particular.
Certainly from a police perspective, you know, burglary is up there with violent crime, I can't think of anything worse than the burglary, because something's been in your own space, it's been in your house. That's something that, sort of, where the police will always prioritise. I almost feel that if we have burglary as a local priority, it's almost like a waste of priority, because it's always going, it's always going to come high. You know, if I can keep burglary down, and it's a bit like squeezing a balloon, if the thing that pops out is car crime, I can almost live with that. Because the things I really want to keep down is, you know, is the burglaries is the violent crime. So I entirely agree with everything you've said, but it's something that, you know, within the CRD team, that there is a burglary team that would be, you know, looking at key individuals when they're released, looking to get them in, take a new path or to get them back inside, basically. You know, it's not, it's something that if we've got an unburdened police to address, it's something we will be aware of as a local team many way and very often. We will be feeding intelligence picture, we will be monitoring. I almost see it as a waste of the local objective for my local team to concentrate on, because there are a number of other people, and we're always going to prioritise it.
Okay, thanks very much, Matt. Yeah, good to play.
I hope you're not dissuaded by the police from setting burglaries as a priority, because you've done it before, and then you do get a report back to you, and you do get local action. So I hope that councillor Price does stick with that. Now, I really want to urge you to get better information on which to base your priority setting. Now, you've got one of your priorities here, relating to motoring, you've got the twenty mile an hour priority, yet you don't have statistics here on motoring offences, you don't have speeding statistics, you don't have dangerous driving statistics. There's a whole range, a whole area there which you're not getting detailed reports on. I'd like to see you getting details on injuries, on the harm and distress that's been caused, as councillor Price has mentioned in relation to burglary, on the costs of crime, just more information so that you can set priorities on an informed basis and based on the risk to harm. Because if you could reduce the number of injuries that were being caused in relation to things like driving in the area, then you would know that you're having a real impact on people's lives. Well, you've mentioned the Greenend Road junction, and I think the driving offences there need to be dealt with as driving offences, not as antisocial behaviour. So I think we've, where people are misusing cars, essentially playing with cars and motorbikes, I think it would be more effective, actually, if they were being dealt with as I would be if I drove without insurance, or rode a bike without a helmet or something like that, rather than being treated under the antisocial behaviour laws. In terms of informing your priorities here, I think one thing that's missing is, there was an antisocial behaviour meeting in King's Hedges, for example. We haven't got the report from that here. So I think as you are now making the priority decisions, you should have all the information which comes from all the engagement and consultation activity that goes on in the area, it should all come here so that it can inform your priorities. And one aspect of that might be what the Police and Crime Commissioner is doing. And the West Central Area Committee is having at its next meeting, the Police and Crime Commissioners, a person who he's delegated a big chunk of his role to, his engagement officer. So I'm wondering whether they will also come here, perhaps they're here tonight, if they are, perhaps you could ask them to identify themselves so we can see them. And we want to know if, if that means the Police and Crime Commissioner is now not going to do what he said, he said he was going to come here every year, perhaps he's not going to do it anymore if he's now delegated that part of his job. I can tell you what happened at the King's Hedges antisocial behaviour meeting, if councillor Price isn't going to do it, but.
Will you carry on your point?
Well, I just think, so one of the big issues that was raised, you've already mentioned, was the parking issue around Campkin Road, Tesco's. And the police were actually quite interesting, because they told us that they could actually tackle, the PCSOs can, if people have parked obstructively, and that they can now more easily with their slate, get some information on the car, and who owns it, and go straight around, if somebody lives locally, go straight around and talk to them about the obstruction, so that was interesting. And dogs was the most, that took up most of the time at that meeting, we were talking about dangerous drugs and then dog fowling, all sorts of things about dogs, yes. And, but on the motoring question, there is the thing that we get our patrols by PCSOs. Now, I'd like you to, I'd be suggesting for a while, you should prioritize patrols by PCs, you can actually deal with dangerous driving and moving traffic offences, which of course they can't. And what they told us at that meeting was they don't have the powers, which you know, but that was, that was what was discussed at that small meeting.
Okay, thanks. There was a lot of stuff there, I'll take a point in terms of the principle about some of that quick data, the evidence being available, as well as some of the report from local police meetings that happened, that certainly could be provided. Maybe we ought to, while Kevin and I are chairing by chair, we'll discuss with Linda perhaps about how that might be incorporated in future, but Linda, if you want to, come back.
Yes, actually, the King's Hedges meeting is one of many meetings we have all over the city, which are in for smaller areas. And normally what we would do is we take away the issues from those areas and we would deal with them, so we wouldn't need for them to be a priority. In fact, the ASB officer that coordinates that particular meeting is here tonight, so she could fill you in if you wanted any more information. Normally, we would feel that we were finding solutions that way, but obviously, there's no problem with us sharing that information with you if you want it. I think that was, with regards to the Police and Crime Commissioner, we can at any stage invite him back. The engagement officer is going to be working with us, she's going to be hot desking from City Council and from Parkside Police. So we would expect her to be very involved, and we can get any input from her on a regular basis as well, if we need it.
Okay, thank Linda, but yeah, we'll get together and have a look at all the data, potentially to be brought to you, I think, what's the point, to my way. Yeah, a quick point from Caitlin.
It's just a curiosity, it's, I think the miracle's about, I'm actually trying to agree with Richard Turner. I'm curious about how burglaries, is it possible, as Richard, it is Richard, isn't it? Could we have a breakdown, my curiosity in this is age related. How many people over sixty are burgling, and how many people between eighteen and twenty-five are burgling? Because apparently they are supposed to be the two most vulnerable groups. And that is slightly realistic, even as well, there is something, there's an awful lot of talk about scams. Telephone scams, computer scams, somebody come at the door, call for somebody, a scam. Do we have any theories on that at all?
I'll start with first one, I don't have the data to have with regards to the sort of the victims. Often, addresses will be targeted because of the physical things about the dress, the fact that, basically, that it's easy to get into as opposed to who's in there. I don't have that data available to give you now. With regards to scams, the majority of scams are classed as frauds. Frauds are dealt with by action fraud largely, so again, that's not the police that investigates it. Because of the nature of scams, typically scams will be addressed, will be carried out by organised crime groups. Us looking at it in isolation of data, out of isolation of Cambridge, doesn't give a full picture, which is why. full picture, which is why action fraud will look at it, because they're looking not just across Cambridge, not just across Cambridgeshire, across the country, because the same teams will set up and be targeting different areas over and over again. So action fraud have the key there, it's not something I have, but scams is something that certainly, the volume of calls we get, it is something that is an issue, it is something, as you say, you just have to look at the national media. But it's not something that we pick up, but there are so many different ways, it's just people trying to get, trying to get your money.
Thank you, Matt, that's a thank you. We'll look at what, data, the debate, what is appropriate for the committee in that future. Thanks for the thanks, we'll move on to my list of councillors this week, councillor Austin.
Hello. Yeah, I'm interested in the data, and I'm particularly interested and concerned about the data for Westchesterton, which is showing where all other areas are showing an overall decline in crime. Westchesterton in the last three months is showing an increase, no, sorry, year on year is showing an increase of over 10%, and over the last three months period, it's over 20%. And I wonder if you've got any clues as to why? And noting that one of your key areas you mentioned was violent crime, and that's the one that's jumped by over 100%.
I mean, the big thing with the violent crime, which is showing increases in a lot of areas, is a lot of that is down to the way crimes have been recorded and the, that they are actually, effectively recording crimes. It used to be that if a couple of people had a bit of a scrap, we would often record that as a, perhaps if it's in the street, we'd record it as a public order offence, so two or three people having a fight, that might have been recorded historically as a public order offence, as all offence with three offenders. Now we're trying to record that as three offences. There are, the violent crime, particularly in lots of areas, we've seen big leaps in figures. When we speak to the ambulance, when we speak to the Adam Brooks about sort of levels, when we speak to officers just out and about, it doesn't feel any more scary out there, it doesn't feel like we've lost control, and you know, it's anything like that. A lot of the violent crime, I think, is to do with the way that we've actually now recording crimes, and the fact that, as I said, we're recording these on victim basis as opposed to an incident basis.
It's funny, this has only affected that area.
It is, and there have had other areas that have increased in sort of larger, despite the, I'm trying to think of the market related to, in the suburbs of the pubs or in Westchesterton, but I don't think it's, I don't have that.
Okay, thanks for the response. Councillor O'Neil.
First of all, a quick up on Richard Taylor's point about data, or data, I think we've got to balance, because it is about how easy it is for the police officers to get hold of this data. You know, I want, I want Jason Rag, sorry, C Rag, Sergeant Rag, yeah, Sergeant Rag to, I don't think it's a title, Sergeant Rag to be spending the majority of his time doing police work, not trying to collate frauds. But having said that, I mentioned before that I've been in contact with the, after the last, the last meeting we talked about is the open data projects at the county council and that, which would theoretically help this, and mean that all the data is there and in order to give reports to the council automatically, so I'd quite like to work with Chair and Vice Chair and make sure it all actually does get linked up, because theoretically that would mean that you wouldn't have to do any work, you'd just all be there and you'd have a report once a month, and we'd see it with data. So that's the point of the data stuff. I was going to suggest we only had two priorities, so it's the second time in a row we've only had two priorities, so I wonder if you could just address why, is there any particular reason, maybe there isn't? But I was going to suggest a third priority around 20 mile an hour and stuff, because I still get a lot of complaints from students, and the speeding data definitely shows us that although there has been some success, it hasn't been universal, we could all agree. So what I was actually going to suggest was that we had a priority where we had one specific road per ward, but taking into account councillor Riving's point, which is related, I was going to suggest we might modify that priority to not be 20 mile an hour, but road enforcement, which would give you your Victoria Road in your area, I was going to suggest Green End Road, 20 mile an hour enforcement, because that's an area where it's a very wide road, that issue's been, engineering issue's been dealt with in another project, but you know, it's a very wide road, it happens at the times when it's not busy, because it's so wide, you can do hair down there, so best what I'm saying is that if I'm suggesting to the committee, we could identify four areas, one per ward, where police are asked to do some enforcement, obviously we're not going to tell you when, we're not going to tell you when to do it, because I've obviously got this clause with it, and you know, and yeah, I think it's, so we could have access to third priority, and obviously if people want to suggest, I'm not going to be able to suggest areas other wards, but Green End Road, Westchesterton.
Okay, we'll come back to a little chat about how we set that priority, because I think there is some consensus that third priority relating to 20 M gate, but other road restrictions, there are enforcement issues, but I've got a few other comments first, and then a quick chat about the parties that will be ongoing. Councillor Pitt.
Firstly, just something I wasn't going to mention, but it came up in a comment from Inspector Johnson, speaking of the name off the side, which I thought would be right. The action fraud people are wonderful, I was the victim of a very small piece of identity left, phoned them off, their helpline is fabulous, I can't say, he was very helpful, he was understanding, he worked out I was stressed, and he torched me down off the ceiling, got me calm, got the information we needed, and I do have similar experience, they were superb, aren't they?
I'm not somebody, so I'd try and ask the question.
Yeah, but that wasn't what I was going to say, but I just put that out as a recommendation. I always like the data, because it allows us to look for both the seasonal pattern and the what's happening now pattern, and it led to me asking and wondering whether people are switching from stealing bicycles to burglary dwellings, or the other way, when one goes down and the other goes up, but I don't think they probably are, I think it's probably just that there are less bikes out when it's dark, and it's easier to burglar when it's dark. But that made me think about whether we want to be thinking about what, trying to go up in spring, and each year, we normally at this time are thinking about open spaces, and ASB on open spaces. Having said that, I think I've been talked out of suggesting that as a priority by my colleague sitting next to me, but I'm just going to throw that out as another possibility. Do you think that it is something that, I assume it's something we'd be keeping on anyway, but is it something you're expecting to start to come to the forefront of? The other question was, you said theft from vehicles was a city-wide problem, does that mean that there's city-wide action to look at it, or is it something we have to be thinking and talking about as well tonight?
No, again, seriously, sort of the acquisitive crime things, the thefts from vehicles, the burglaries, are picked up by teams, because it is often similar people involved in that sort of criminality around the acquisitive crime, so it is being looked at. I'd always rather that if they're going to go out and commit a crime, and if I can move them from breaking people's houses to breaking into people's cars, that's a preference first, because again, they're out on the street, they're CCTV, there's more options, opportunities for detection, so, but it is something that's being looked at across the city. With regard to the general data sort of questions, clearly I'm keen to provide information that is beneficial to the Chair, to the committee, I'm keen to provide the same data for the four areas, because I'm keen, you know, that we get priorities that are informed correctly, and that are meaningful on a local basis. One of the key things is that a lot of the data collation is actually done by now police officers, you know, we are in a position where we don't have the support staff that I had. I've been asked in the past about breaking down some of the violent crime, and sort of taking domestic violence away from some of the violent crime figures, because that was the include. I agree, that would give a better picture, but it is a number of sort of searches that you have to do to extract the data. That's generally taking a police officer off, or myself, away from other duties, so I'm keen to supply the data, I'm not resistant to supplying the data if you want, I just want to be doing, I just do it in a format which is sort of automated largely, so that I'm copying stuff across as opposed to researching. We are, you know, we do look at, we do look at the data, but it's not necessarily by ward data often, so it's not something that comes to me in that format. With regard to priorities, yes, I've only put forward two suggested priorities, because again, I want priorities to come out of the meeting as opposed to something I just proposed, I've got the two most logical ones which I've put forward. And again, I'm keen that we're setting local objectives that can be delivered from my team, which are local officers, PCs, aside, PCSOs, as opposed to things that are being delivered by squads and teams elsewhere.
Yeah, thank you again, and at that point, and before, we'll quickly try and wind up and have a quick chat about the three priorities recommendations we've had forward, which we've put to sixty through. I have got, yeah, on the order, I have got councillors Scut, Councillor Perry, councillor Bird, councillor Portoff, Mr White, councillor Scut.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say thank you very much to Sergeant Redd for pursuing the drugs issue in the way that it has been, and although you'd be concerned about vulnerable people being exploited and the predatory conduct that's going on in relation to vulnerable people and drugs, if it's happening anywhere in the country and anywhere in Cambridge, it is concerning that it's happening in Westchesterton in particular, because I know there are vulnerable people in this area who are susceptible to the sort of conduct that you've described. So many thanks for that being pursued. The second aspect that I'd like to address is to follow on from what councillor O'Reilly said about heavy vehicles on Victoria Road, and that's a concern in Westchesterton, as it is in Arbury. And another area where it's been raised with me is Milton Road, because there are apparently restrictions on heavy vehicles at night time on that road as well, and a number of residents have raised that with me, so if that were to be made a priority with Victoria Road, if consideration could be given to including Milton Road as well. The third point is following on from councillor Austin, and it is concern, this issue about violent crime, that it's rising in Westchesterton now, of course, that can be a blip, because we do know that generally speaking, violent crime remains at a relatively stagnant notion that we do need explicit statistics on this, and particularly in relation to criminal assault and other forms of domestic violence. Councillor Agnes Sinott, who is on the City Council, has been pursuing this issue with some vigour, and has set up a committee that consists of a range of institutions and so on, and I think that if the data system was set up so that this were put in as an issue from the beginning, then there wouldn't be a need for manual extraction, and it should go in as an explicit issue in and of itself, that's what I consider would be a good way of dealing with it. And then the final point is that I know that the effect of pedal cycle has gone down most significantly in Westchesterton, and I just wonder if there is any explanation for that, because it just does seem odd that it's gone down, because it generally is a crime that is persistent throughout Cambridge, and it has been of great significance in Westchesterton, so thank you.
Quite a few comments, sir. With regard to domestic abuse in particular, we target the individuals as opposed to wards, so it is all picked up, but it's not looked at on a ward basis, because it's usually looked at, you know, you might have a vulnerable victim who keeps tracking a certain type of partner, or you might have an offender who keeps targeting a woman, so we're after targeting the victims and the offenders as opposed to the ward that they live in, which is why it doesn't, which is why I don't break it down, because if somebody moves, it's not that we've solved the problem on the ward, it just moved somewhere else. And again, you know, one person who has multiple partners in different wards, it just doesn't work for me on a ward basis. And that's the reason it doesn't sort of automatically break down, it's because we're focusing on the individuals as opposed to the area that way. With regards to the cycle theft, I know there has been, Joseph Plank commented the fact there was a couple of fairly prolific people moving north to the east area, whether their previous routine had taken them through Westchesterton as they come into the city, and now they're taking them a different route in, and that's the sort of thing that could have an impact. Again, some of the work that we do with schools, you know, we're getting early and we're sort of encouraging kids to get locks, and a couple of presentations at schools can mean that several hundred kids are now using bike locks, and it can have a, typically with kids, a short-term impact, but that could be the thing, the sort of thing that has an impact over a short period.
The heavy vehicle.
Milton Road, I can imagine that what's typically happening is the fact that, yeah, vehicles following sat house, and if they're on Victoria Road, they're even coming out in Milton Road, Distant Road, or Victoria Road, because if one of the arterial routes is in, so largely it would be addressed, off the top of head, is it seven, seven, half tonne down?
Well, we're getting, we're getting the point about the...
But it will fall apart in arterial route.
Yeah. I'm always conscious we're running over time, but I've got councillor Perry, councillor Portoff, councillor White, just quickly make your points, and then we'll get on to the secondly ongoing part of the council.
Just while I heartily support the idea of targeting HGV drivers on Victoria Road, who seem to have no shame, I've got a quick question about bike theft and the benefits of registering bikes. I've had quite a few comments from residents and also my students about coming to their bikes, having the bike locked up by somebody else, presumably to come back to later, and when they've phoned the police to say what can they do, the police, on the phone they've been told that nothing can be done, because it would be criminal damage to the lock, and I'm wondering if the registering of bikes could be a way around this, if the bike was registered and it could be proven to be yours, or if the police can actually do something and they're being given a round of price over the phone, because it's very sad to think that you can prevent a crime, and then actually you can only do something once the crime has been committed. And is this in fact as big a problem as it's coming to you right now?
It's one of the sort of many tactics that people use often, one of the things they will do, as you say, is they'll lock up, you know, they'll see a bike that they like, they'll lock it up with their own lock, so they're the true owner, they can't remove it. The problem we sometimes get is we'll get called to in an instant, some of them, you say, this is my bike. Okay, well, have you got receipts? Of course, nobody's got receipts or anything like that. Key thing is, if you've got your bike registered on immobilised and it hasn't just been registered 15 minutes ago, then it's probably a fairly good indicator that it is your bike, and that's one of the benefits of, in the absence of anything else, or you know, photograph of that bike outside the house that you've got on your phone, those sorts of things, it's definitely beneficial. When we stop people, you know, one of the key checks that we do is the frame number, if the bike's not reported as stolen, because it's just been stolen, or because somebody has reported stolen, can't remember their frame number. The check that we always do is an immobilised check, immobilises, national register, you can, you can put any sort of, you know, musical instruments, mobile phones, all these things, we will check, you know, if somebody says, yeah, it's my bike, we'll run it through that, but if it comes back as something different, or with a stolen marker, that's helpful to us. What doesn't help is when we check in the bike and it's not reported stolen, and it's not, it's not coming up on, you know, immobilises, registered anywhere, or anything like that. It's definitely worthwhile, I can understand why people are being told, well, if it's locked, it's, if it is your bike, and you have, if it is your bike, and you know it's your bike, and somebody has locked it, and it's not, it's not a case of they've locked their bike to something that you've got yours that you've accidentally done it, I would say no. The advice is probably accurate, but not particularly helpful.
Okay, you are, great point. Councillor Bird.
Thank you. Matt, I've got three issues. First one, again, these quaddies, so many residents are on to me about it, it just goes on and on and on. They say there's like five or more cars out there at 12 o'clock at night, making noise loud music, drinking, speeding, all that. Surely we could get a camera up just to try and calm it down a bit. Also, speeding, I think we should think, Westchesterton's quite at a hotspot for
Surely we could get a camera up just to, to try and calm it down a bit. Um, also, speeding, um, I think we should think that Eastchesterton's quite a hot spot for speeding, especially around Fen Road area, Scotland Road, so it's not just Greenham Road, there's other areas as well are affected. And actually, some of the small streets, like Lacston, all them areas, there's a lot of speed going on there. I was nearly here actually, the other day. Um, and the other thing is cycling, um, are there unusual culprits, which we've heard about for a while?
Cycle thieves?
Yeah.
A cycle thief is, is an entire mix. Um, you have people who are coming up, uh, again, from London, um, using the main life system, that are coming into the city, stealing a real high-value bike, I mean, just cycling it off to a railway station, uh, and often having it sold. And you put it on, photo of it on Gumtree, by the time we get down to London, so you've got your high-end sort of cycle theft, you've got, um, you know, people that are just sort of finding bikes that are either, you know, often keeps young people that are taking bikes to use as their own, quick respray, and then just riding it around. And there are others that are targeting sort of like mid-range, um, bikes, acquistive crime in relation to sort of burglaries and things like that. It's a mixed, it is, it's a mixed bag, sort of, depending on, depending on the, the bike that's been stolen to the, the victim, it's fairly relevant. You know, it's their bike, isn't it? But, um, it, it's a mixed bag with regards to that. With regards to grumpy's, that had been, from my perspective, that had been quiet for a period in the last few weeks, around the times compiling reports, um, there had been, we've started to get increased numbers of calls again, so, yeah, I mean, that's, I put that one as a suggestion. Um, can, they're not ours, um, the, the county.
Yeah. Can we get priority from you or your side on it to say, yes, we do need this, can we?
Clearly, if it's, if it's something I'm dealing with as a priority, that's going to add weight to, you know, to, to any bid that I make.
Okay, thanks very much, yeah. Um, councillor Corkle.
Yeah, I want to go back to councillor Price's, um, comments around the, the increase in dwelling burglary and other burglary and theft from vehicles. Is there any correlation between, between that and, and the increased, or, or the drug, drug conviction data in the same area?
Off the top of my head, don't know, you're asking, are the, are the drug, is there any? Not, not with the, it's not meant to be the dealers who are involved in burglary, it's going to be the users that are involved in burglary. If you've got high prevalence of drug use in there, you're going to have a high level of acquistive crime. So it's, but certainly not linked to the, the dealers who are coming up from London, that they're not involved in that, that element of business. They're dealers and not burglars.
Okay, and finally, it's Dwight.
Hello.
Microphone coming, I think.
Um, it's partly, partly statement and partly, um, a question. Um, it seems to me that we seem to be persecuting professional car drivers that have gone through several tests to become a licensed, uh, vehicle driver. Um, now, there's two things in twenty mile an hour. I use Harley Road frequently, and I'd like to say that twenty mile an hour is working. Now, if you want perfection, and you're looking at twenty miles an hour and under, it probably won't happen. But I think if, if the police are truthful and they observe the car drivers, they are less than thirty miles an hour, on average it's about twenty-four to twenty-six. At night time, it's probably a high speed. Now, I'd also like to say we have cyclists. The cyclists don't have any test, they wear earphones, they do exactly what they want. And I've actually heard cyclists say, it doesn't matter, you can do what you want in this town. So I think we need to look at cyclists as well on an equal basis to the persecution of the giving, uh, car drivers that give an awful lot of employment and, and also trade to the country itself, you know, before we, we take employees. The other thing is, when I go around the roads in Cambridge, I was told when I took my driving test, you look at road markings as well as signs, there aren't any road markings anymore, because we don't maintain them. And if you ask a policeman, can I book a cyclist? I can only book a cyclist if he's got the original licence. If he hasn't got the original licence, he goes round, down a one-way street, he can quite easily say, I'm sorry, I have no knowledge of the highway code.
I'm not sure about, I mean, was Matt going to come back very briefly on that? Because I don't want, do you want to get onto the ongoing priorities, but running well over time.
No, I mean, certainly cyclists are not going to pick up points on licence, because they haven't got a licence, but they would still be eligible for fitness community notices and things like that.
Okay, and regarding twenty M G, we ought to go on to the ongoing parties, so we're looking at, um, I was claiming in the report, um, page sixty-three, recommendation that's, uh, on session five. Um, we have continuing safeguarding important work around fire past eight o'clock, where it's happened. Um, A S B, uh, tackling anti-vehicle behaviour, Scotland Road, Greenham Road area, and then the suggestion has been that effectively we continue with twenty M G limit, uh, support, uh, and linking that to some specific roads and enforcement connections.
Well, I, I, after what councillor O'Reilly said, so you're saying road, so specific roads to enforce, roads to enforce. And then now you're saying specific roads to enforce on walls, and so the councillor O'Reilly suggested, if we're going to go next, you go, the way you know it, for Eastchester, I was suggesting we go roads and, and way that we're allowed it.
Okay, if we, if we keep that, if we skip to the party of road enforcement.
I mean, just to, to take it from what councillor Bird said, I'd be happy to say that if you're real concerned about a big green road, I'd be happy to say that we pick the road that has the worst, probably twenty mile an hour speed limit, and has the worst compliance with that. So if that's not green road, where the data says we go with the road that's got the worst non-compliant twenty mile an hour, I'm kind of looking for a, a nod or a shake of the head in terms of that, but in other words, it might be green road, you know, just look after these, you see, we think it says in case of one that's got the worst compliance in twenty miles an hour.
Okay, um, are we clear on what we want to deal with the third party, councillor Austin, briefly?
Yeah, it's just, I think there's different issues with the road here. One is if, there's a specific issue about the heavy duty vehicles on those arterial roads are crazy because of particular circumstance. I think there's a longer ongoing setting in Westchester, there's roads like where people are coming off a twenty mile an hour road, they come off places like Arden Road and do a quick shortcut through the Nease Avenue estate. That's more of an ongoing problem, why they're taking a shortcut and speeding through those estates, which I will answer that's going to continue in the long term, so whatever way you look at it, can make sure we tackle the different kinds of problems.
Yeah, well, councillor guessing, third party is continuing to support the twenty M G limit and the specific issues related to road enforcement. And I'm sure a note has been made about the content made on particular streets apart tonight. Is that okay? Are we happy with that? Okay, so the one, three recommendations, all over the table? Okay, thank you much, so one of our, a brief interview.